Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Monday, February 24th, 2020 County Council Meeting. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda.
Aye.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. For the invocation, I'd like to put in the minutes that Ms. Bertha Vice Chair Goins is out for medical reasons. Now down to invocation, Councilmember Trapp.
Let us pray. God, thank you for allowing us to gather again today. Please let every decision made up here today is to benefit to our entire Fairfield County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Trapp. Next, we have the approval of February 10th, 2020 minutes. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved improperly second.
Any discussions? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it. Now down to public presentations. We have one public presentation, a proclamation declaring March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. We have Ms. Edna Rab. I think I spoke with Ms. Rab already, just to give her a little brief description, if I could. Whereas, Hemophilia in South Carolina is a not-for-profit organization founded in 1973 supporting the South Carolina Bleeding Disorders community. And now, therefore be it resolved that we Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim March 2020 as Bleeding Disorders Month. I witness thereto, I have hereunto set my hand this 24th day of February 2020. Chairman Robinson. Come on, take a picture.
We can stand behind him.
Stand up.
I'm gonna stand up.
I just wanted to say, I really thank y'all for this right here. I say in the hemophilia, thank y'all. And my son also, but he's shy right now, you know. But I really had, you know, we had some difficult times, but everything is all right now. Yeah, so this is, I love it. I really love it. And I thank y'all so much. All right.
All right, now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign and speak?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on library and aging fast.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. There's no greater key mandate for any organization, particularly government, than helping others help themselves. And we have two examples on tonight's agenda. The first is the library. Since the library first closed during its transition period over a year ago now, we never changed the website. So anybody looking for the Ridgway Library location, hours, and even the picture of the building will be fooled if they Google it, which we all do, and we go online, the internet, you key in Ridgway Library, you get all the wrong information. And we experienced that ourselves some time ago. It had hours on there. Oh, let's go. It says they're open. Well, they weren't open. They didn't have those hours. And those, so neither the hours, nor the location, nor the picture of the building are the same. Let's help the library, help itself, lend to someone from IT to change their website to update it, as opposed to how it was over a year ago. And speaking of helping others help themselves, I'm really pro Council of Aging. They do a lot of good work. I follow them on Facebook, and I really appreciate everything they've done. And I think the county could help them in this manner, perhaps who's ever the assigned councilman to the Council of Aging. There's real need to help them get as much money as possible, all seniors, and of course, that becomes before they retire, through Social Security. How many of you realize there's 87 possible Social Security options for a married couple with Social Security? Anybody in this room know more than two of those options? Let's arm our citizens with optimum amount of decision-making ability, because this can affect their entire life from the age 62 on. Let's arm them with all the possible information that they can get to ensure that they get maximum amount from Social Security. But they won't, and we can't get that on our own. My suggestion is, is to start setting up seminars, and do that for Medicaid, Medicare also. Start setting up seminars for them, to help them discern what's their best route. Now, I or you, nobody can say this is the best route for each other. Everybody has their own unique situation. That's why it's so complicated. And that's why just reading a few brochures, and gosh help you if you think the SSA will assist you with this. So let's help, through the Council of Aging, let's help others help themselves by helping them understand the Social Security options that are available to them, so that they can have a fruitful retirement life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment one.
All right, there are no public hearings, there are no ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Board and Commission minutes, each council member should have received it as information. Board and Commission appointments, we have one, an appointment of Ms. Cynthia Simpson to the Hospital Board of District One. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Also, just keep in mind, I think, just to let Ms. Cynthia know, I think they meet quarterly, Mr. Bell. And also, I think we may have to keep Mr. Bright on as a conciliary, because he does read the financials, just until she gets up to speed, so. Old business, we have a discussion regarding the lease terms, but we're going to defer that into after, after executive session. New business, none. Now down to our county administrator's report, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we have on the agenda tonight in my report is the recognition of Ms. Jane Scarborough. Ms. Scarborough had worked for 28 years as the Director of the Old English District, trying to promote tourism here in our region. Mr. Gene Stevens, Director of our Chamber of Commerce, had worked with her, and he wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for giving me a few minutes to recognize Ms. Scarborough. Ms. Jane Scarborough passed away on November 23rd, 2019. She had been the Executive Director of the Old English District for 28 years, and was also a member of the South Carolina Association of Tourism Regions. Ms. Scarborough worked tirelessly for the counties of Chester, Chesterfield, Fairfield, Kershaw, Lancaster, Union, and York, to promote woodlands and waterways, campgrounds, state and national parks, hiking, fishing, picnic areas, and much, much more. She dearly loved promoting the counties and inviting the public to come and experience all the Old English District has to offer by helping to plan trips, to include things to do, places to stay, where to eat and shop, and news of all the happenings in the different areas. Ms. Scarborough will be missed. I just want to add this real quick. I met Jane about a year ago. And when I tell you, there have been very few better champions for Fairfield County than Ms. Scarborough. I met her the first time she brought a group of travel writers to come and talk about some of the unique restaurants we had in Fairfield. And she was actually very sick at that time. I mean, she had a mask on, and she actually couldn't shake your hand or anything. But she was still out in the field, you know, with the travel writers, just, I mean, she even had, you know, if you could see it, she had a smile on her face. You could tell by the way she looked. She did such a great job of representing, I think we were one of her favorites. You know, you're not supposed to, I'm a former coach, you're not supposed to have favorites. I think we were one of her favorites, as far as what we had to offer and just being able to promote it. So she did so many great things for Fairfield County, and I thank you, Mr. Taylor, for allowing me a few minutes to recognize her.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, is there any system that we have that we can just recognize people for accomplishments, anything?
Council can issue a proclamation. That is a common thing that's done for someone who has, you know, been a great asset to, you can issue a proclamation declaring a certain person a remembrance of, something of that nature. Which is a level above, obviously, what we've done here.
I would like for us to, at some point in time, Mr. Chair, we could just, let's talk about how we do this going forward, too. Because there are sometimes people, you know, they have 100-year birthdays, they do a whole lot of stuff. And I'm just talking about, what could we do generally to recognize people for accomplishment and a life well served? So if we could sort of arrange that, so we can just have that discussion, seeing whether we could do anything for people, I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you.
We can do that. Next, we do have a situation with an ambulance that we need to address. We do have an ambulance that was taken out of service, I think. Mr. Tanner, it caught on fire, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, sir.
This is one we lost to fire. The insurance has come in on this one, financial impact, and it has been before the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee has recommended that we take this action. Ambulance cost $234,921. Insurance came in at $188,467.61, which leaves us a balance of $46,453.39. And the Finance Committee recommended that we do cover that cost, so we can purchase a new ambulance.
Do I have a motion? All right, go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
You need to note, when I mentioned that the other day, you said, "You mean another ambulance burn?" And I said, "Well, this didn't just happen. It happened back in October."
October 2019.
Sure, it's the one that's been holding us off, by claiming they were looking to see what was wrong with it.
That's right. Ms. Tanner.
Yep. We need action on this prior to you going into, we've got a report by him also.
That's right, I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone.
Yes, we will.
That's right. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Taylor, where would the $46,000 come from?
That would come, it was fund balance.
Any further from council? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Now we will move into, we do have a report by Mike, Mr. Tanner, our EMS director, to give an overview of the services that he does offer.
Good evening, council, often, like, I've been here, just like, what, every month here lately? But I wanted to go over some of the services we provide and what we do, you know, as emergency services. Not only do we do, provide ambulance transportation, we do basic and advanced life support, you know, ambulance transportation, but we also go above and beyond that. We also do technical rescue. We are the only paid technical rescue service in the county. We provide extrication and stabilization, high-low and low-angle rope rescue, confined space rescues, and water rescue. We also have equipment for remote rescues. We do a lot of hunters in woods, ATV parks, you know, we have patients way down in, you know, ravines and stuff, and we have all the equipment to do that as well. We do a lot of community services as well. We do CPR, first aid training for anybody who wants it. So if anybody in this county wants CPR training, we'll get you certified in that CPR training. Just get ahold of me or one of my staff, and we'd be more than glad to get that scheduled and get everybody trained. We also offer lifeline services. We've got an aging group in Fairfield County. What this does is, it affords them to stay at home and have that extra level of protection there. They can wear a button around their neck, they can wear a necklace, they don't have to have a landline, it can be ran through cell phones. And if they need help, it's one push of a button away, and we'll be able to get all the information from wherever that button came from that was pressed, all their medical background, before we even get to the house. So this is a great thing for the elderly or anybody who's homebound for the citizens of Fairfield County. Some of the equipment we have, we don't just have ambulances, you know, we have technical rescue equipment, we've got rope rescue equipment. We got, our, each ambulance is stocked, just like a ER, a hospital ER. We've got 12 lead EKGs, we have pharmacology, we have anything from rectilinear biphasic defibrillators. That means, in layman's terms, will shock you, you know, if you have a heart attack. Automated CPR devices, everything we have is electronic now, electronic patient care reporting. We can send the EKG to the hospital before we even get there. The doctor sees it, and we can send you straight to the cath lab instead of wasting time in the ER. We have all that technical ability now. We have three types of people to work for us. We have EMT basics, we have advanced EMTs, and we have paramedics. EMTs, they can do all the basic skills and all that. They can stop bleeding, they can do one-person, two-person BVMs, they can breathe for you. The people who really make the difference are the advanced and the paramedics. The advanced can provide some advanced airway options, so we can control your breathing, we can secure your airway. But the paramedics are the lifesavers. They provide the defibrillation, they provide the pharmacology that's going to help anybody with, like, diabetes or seizures or anything like that. They can drill IV into your bones. I know that sounds terrible, but it's a great access point, and when you don't have any other IV access, we have that ability. We can provide immobilization and stabilization of all the patients that we can run across in the county, and that's anything. Our guys have to be prepared, from all the way from delivering a baby to somebody having a stroke to a car accident. So our guys have to be well-trained and well-rounded, because each call, we don't know what we're going to run into. What did we do last year? We ran 4,639 calls. And as you can see, I broke them down into each one of our response areas. And of course, our greatest call volume was in the Windsboro area, and that's Unit 1 and 7. They ran 1,705 calls. Greenbrier came in second with 1,150. And probably, I'd say, the half of those were coming to respond to the Windsboro area as well. And then Mitford, Blair, and Southeastern Jenkinsville, most of those calls were actually in that area. And like I said, for a total of 4,639 calls. Our response times are right on the national average, we're at 10 minutes and 28 seconds. And for 4,600 calls, that's excellent. So where do we take these patients to? And what types of calls do we run? As you can see, I just put, highlighted some of the stuff that we actually did. You can see coronary pain respiratory are some of our big calls. We did deliver six babies, you know, that was pretty neat last year for our crews. We had some 11 gunshots, four stabbings, some psychiatric fractures, and a lot of falls. But that just gives you just a overview, a thousand-foot, you know, overview of actually some of the calls we ran last year. And we transported 3,275 of those 4,639 calls. As you can see, I got a graph up there to show you where we transport and where we transport mostly to. The majority of our patients go to Palmetto Health, Richland, that was 1,137. And then in a close second was Providence Health, Fairfield, which is great. The more people we can take there, the better, you know, our service can provide, because we're in our area, and we can have that turnaround a lot faster. So that's a good number there, that, that we're transporting a good amount of people to that facility. Then Providence Northeast is third, and then, you can see, it's a spattering of different hospitals from there. We took somebody to the Exxon, it says, that has to be, some kind of error, I was like, Exxon, yeah. I guess they needed gas, they had a gas emergency. Some of the stuff we did in 2019, like I said, we don't just run calls, we try to be proactive in the, in the community and stuff. And one of the big projects that I was really, really, you know, impressed with, and I'm glad that we got done, is we placed an AED in every county facility that was occupied. So you can go in any county facility, you'll find a ZOLED AED plus there. And that AED is essential in providing early defibrillation if somebody has a cardiac arrest. We trained over 100 county employees in the operation of those CPR AED devices. So hopefully, you know, nobody will ever have to use it, but if it's needed, it's there, and the county employees know how to use it, and they know how to implement it. And that can make a huge difference in somebody's survivability. We trained a bunch of the fire service guys, too. We trained over 45 EMRs. They help us on a, basically, a daily basis. So if we have a crew that's going to have a long response time, we send those EMRs out, they can get there within minutes and start providing care until we get there. So we've trained over 45 of those. We also created an intern program with coalition with the WIOA for EMT training. We've already hired two of those full-time. And we just now created an intern program shift with Midlands Technical College to get our guys' transitions from EMT to paramedics. We've done a lot of other stuff as far as training and attending multiple PR events. We adopted 20 seniors from the Council on Aging, that was great. My guys picked that up, and they ran with it. It was good to get that to all the senior citizens in the county. And we safely treated and transported over 4,000 patients. Good stuff. What do we do to make sure we're doing it right? We have an extensive QA program. Every call gets reviewed by EMS captain. Every serious call, every cardiac arrest, every real life-threatening call gets reviewed by physician, myself and a training director, as well as the shift captain. So we harp on medical and their knowledge, and make sure they're doing the right protocols and procedures on a daily basis. We have training. If you don't like school, EMS is something you don't want to get into. We train every day, every week. It's an ongoing thing, because we have to, like I said earlier, we have to be prepared for anywhere from a delivery to a stroke to a car accident. And like I said, every employee, every year must maintain all their certifications, and we help with that process as well. But why I'm here again is the two most important items that we have in this county are our employees, number one. But we can have the best equipment and the best, you know, employees in the state. If we don't have that ambulance, we're not getting anywhere. So that's the two most important things in my service, is my employees and the ambulances. Any questions?
What brand of vehicle this we getting again?
It's a Dodge 4500 Road Rescue. It's one of the best riding trucks they make. It's a liquid spring 4500 Dodge.
One of the ones you could take and exchange to back.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what my whole plan is, we want to get rid of the old airbag systems, and once we get all road rescue, it'll dramatically decrease the cost of what we can get a new ambulance for, because we can take that back that has liquid spring and new technology and mount it on a new chassis, and we'll have a new truck with around 80,000 or 90,000 compared to 240,000.
Mr. Tanner, how are we looking on employees?
We're, we just hired five people last week, and that puts us back to full. Which is great.
Any further questions from council, comments? Thank you, Mike.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think that you guys do an excellent job, and I remember when you had to come out and visit my house one time. You guys did an excellent job, and I just want to say thank you for all the work y'all are doing. It takes a very special group of people to do what you're doing, so my hat's off to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, we have another request of action. This request of action comes from the Council on Aging. Council on Aging, they're looking to build a new facility. I think they've torn down some of their existing facilities they had, and they're looking to do a new one. This is an item that has been before the Finance Committee. This, I think are proposing roughly a budget of $500,000 as a grant for $350,000 that they're pursuing right now. And they're looking to request some money for the match. It's been before the Finance Committee meeting, I think you all decided at the Finance Committee meeting, I missed that one, to match it up to 150,000. I don't think they're going to fully need that. We do have Ms. Angie Connor here to go into the details and make a more specific request.
Yeah, thank y'all for having me tonight. The Council on Aging has an opportunity to apply for a permanent improvement grant. They come around every so often from the South Carolina Department on Aging. And what this is, it will allow for funds up to 350,000. It requires a 30% match, which is 150,000 that goes along with it. What we would like to do, we've simply outgrown our senior center. The services that we provide are our Meals on Wheels and our activities and our group dining program out of the senior, out of the, excuse me, the center. And currently, we are at capacity with our home-delivered meals, we are at capacity with our frozen meals, because we don't have a place to store them. And we are just out of space for the programs that we're doing. One of the programs Mr. Bright mentioned earlier, they actually have something offered like that in Columbia, but we don't have the space for them to come up here and do those programs often for us, because we're doing everything out of one room. So what we need, we finally got the opportunity for this grant to come up, and we just need more space. So we have actually hired a contracting firm to kind of give us some prices and overview, and we're talking about actually renovating the senior center that we have now. It's about 3,000 square feet, but it's just, it was built in 2002, and it's just not working for us anymore. It needs to be updated, and the kitchen needs to be bigger, and we need to add some program spaces. So that's what we're looking for some assistance with. We do have some money on hand for ourselves in order to help with the budget that's going to be with this, but we are looking for council's support in helping us get that 30%.
Do I have a motion before we?
Aye, so, second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion from council?
I just have the same question, you're with it?
Any further questions?
I'd just like to thank you for the hard work you guys.
Y'all have been very supportive, and we couldn't do what we do without the volunteers that we have and county council. It's very good for us.
I think Ms. Johnson, you want to speak?
I just wanted to grant back, they don't need the money until after July.
Yep, that's correct.
Good budget, that is correct.
That is correct. The grant is actually due this week, and I'm applying, I'm sending that in, but we were not expected to get any kind of notice of award until after April. So any funds that we would need would not need to be dispersed to us until after July 1.
So we just need a letter of commitment, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Commitment letter.
So, if no further comments, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Connor.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The last item I have tonight is, we have Ms. Denise Bryan, our Airport Director, and she would like to address council and let them know about the upcoming Aviation Week.
Good evening, council. There is one thing I just want to let Mike Tanner know, is he forgot one thing that his department does, along with other county departments, is they support our community events, for example, Wings and Wheels. And I just want to thank him for doing all of that. That's extra time for them, and we really appreciate it. I'm just here for a short period of time, I just want to show you guys a video. This video was produced by the South Carolina Aviation Association, of which I'm a board of directors member on. This was produced for our Aviation Week that we had in August, and I know that I talked to you guys about the two high school students that we gave exploratory flights to at no charge, and also the Boy Scouts that we had 20 of that came out to get their aviation badges. This video will be shown to legislators in the state of South Carolina, all House of Representatives members and senators, and this will be used to acquire more funding and money for South Carolina airports. This is a very important video, and I just wanted you guys to see, notice that the first approximately two to three minutes of the video has Fairfield County up front and center.
My favorite thing about flying personally is the freedom. There's nothing like it. Fell in love with it when I was four years old, and when my dad put me on his lap in the airplane, you know, that was it, I was hooked. One of my favorite things to do, though, is to inspire new people to fly the airplane.
I'm not even lying, I'm a little nervous, man, just see what it's going to be like.
I've been chosen out of a whole lot of people at my school, so it's a big step towards something new. I'm a big ball of emotions right now. Hopefully, it's fun, exciting, and I don't psych myself out.
I hope they walk away with the same kind of passion that most of us in aviation feel for flying.
Honestly, I
Honestly, I feel like I want to get my pilot's license because this was an amazing experience.
We really want to promote general aviation and let everybody know how important it is to everybody.
South Carolina is very important when it comes to aviation. We've got 58 publicly-owned public-use airports. And those 58 airports bring $16.3 billion to South Carolina's economy every year.
We're at the Hamilton Owens Airport giving the 2019 AMT of the Year Award. AMT is Aircraft Maintenance Technician. We awarded it to Ryan Turiaf.
Winning the award, I was very excited to find out I had one and to have a lot of my friends and customers that respect me and I respect them, to have them all there. It made me feel special and I was excited to be able to share it with everybody.
Aviation Week is important in South Carolina because it's an opportunity for South Carolina Aviation Association and all of the aviation industries in South Carolina to showcase the facilities and resources that each of our communities has to the community of South
Here at the Low Country Terminal, this opening today is exciting to see a new chapter in the history of the airport, especially with this new terminal. It seems to me like it is just the beginning of great things to happen for Colton County.
We wanted our terminal to reflect the Low Country feel, to carry the theme of the front porch of the Low Country so you can see that it has the porches and the red rocking chairs that you will see when you see Walter Borough advertised.
You cannot hide from the fact that the history is what connects us, but it's what's going to also propel us into the future because we're standing on the backs of a lot of people. This is excellent. And you can feel the energy.
I love flying for one reason, the main reason, it gets you there faster. And to be honest with you, I'm still amazed that airplanes are able to get off the ground.
It's not that the sky is the limit, the sky is an opportunity. An airport is an important tool in industry recruitment and this one is a gem when it comes to that role.
GKN Aerospace is a global company. We have around 18,000 employees. And for us, the location is very important. And our main customers is HondaJet, which is right at the border to North Carolina, and Boeing down in Charleston, South Carolina. Within a few hours, we can be at our customers to help them, support them, and deliver parts to them if needed.
The Orangeburg Municipal Airport has combined an economic impact of over $5 million.
Large companies that have their own airplanes are not coming into areas that cannot service them whenever they get there. They want to be able to land in a county that can take them to the site that they want to go to as fast as possible.
In our instance, lower taxes allows us to reinvest more money back into the company, which allows us to grow the company. And the tax structure and the business climate of South Carolina is one of the most favorable in the nation.
I think what it is, a lot of people think airports are only for the rich and famous. And I think it's a responsibility of the airport management to realize that the airport only exists because the local community puts up with it, because of noise and everything else. And they don't really see how it helps them. And I think it's important that, you know, the airport staff become advocates for the airport and find out what does the local community need. What's the big thing? Do they need jobs? Do they need education? What do they need? And find out what the needs are of the local community and build that into the airport's operations. So today at Spartanburg, we're building in the need of education and we're building in the need for business opportunities. What I'm trying to do here is celebrate the past, recognize and promote the future and the present. And obviously, you know, with the young people coming in, understands the future and it's our job to leave a legacy and make sure young people come out here and get exposed to this so they can carry them to the next level.
How proud of the airport are you? I'm very proud. I just have one other thing that I want to bring to your attention for the South Carolina Aviation Association, hold on, Aviation Week Committee. I will be the chairman for that. So I will be assisting all the airports in the state of South Carolina to figure out what they want to do for Aviation Week. And I think because of this video, we're going to have a large amount of airports that want to participate this year. So that's great things for aviation in the state of South Carolina and Fairfield County. Any questions?
No question, but I want to thank you for all the work you do. And I've been out there and I tell you what, your concern for the airport and all the work you've done to try to make sure the airport gets up to a standard, the new gas pumps and all that. I tell you, we're very proud of the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Couldn't do it without you guys.
I too. I promised I'd get out there, but I'm still waiting on Councilmember Bell and Gilbert to give me that airplane to utilize it a little more, so.
You can borrow mine. Just come on out.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
All right, now down to our clerk to councils report. Ms. Davis.
Just a few additions to the 2020 meeting dates. The Volunteer Fireman's Banquet is scheduled for May the 8th. The first reading of the budget is scheduled for the regular meeting on March the 23rd with budget work sessions on March 30, April 6, and April 20. They're all Mondays. The second reading and the public hearing is scheduled for the regular meeting on April 27. And the third and final reading is scheduled for the regular meeting on May the 11th.
I think that should be the action item, shouldn't it? Added dates or no? Okay. All right. No questions, now down to our second public comment session. Does anyone want to sign to speak, Ms. Davis?
We have nine who wish to speak. First, Ms. Shirley Siebel, speaking on the incinerator.
Good evening, Shirley Siebels. I'm a resident of District 3. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Taylor, members of County Council, we have been betrayed. I stand here before you, as humbly as I know how, as a member of our core group, the Citizens for Environmental Justice. Last year, our community of District 2 and District 3 citizens came before you and brought our worries and our concerns about the burn incinerator that you wanted to put on the border of District 2 and District 3 on Airport Road. After a community meeting with Mr. Taylor, his staff, and the staff from DHEC, we were led to believe Fairfield County had two other sites where they could place their burn incinerator rather than across the street from the Royal Hills subdivision. Fairfield County was going to make every effort to place the incinerator at a location where it would not impact not only us and our quality of life, but it would not impact our environment. We have been betrayed. Since our meeting, since my meeting with your staff, I learned that there has been some opposition from the Center Creek, Blythewood communities. You no longer have the time nor the will to bother with us. You see, we have neither the 1,500 voices as the Center Creek community. We can't tell you how many hundreds of acres any one of our residents owns as the Center Creek community. Nor are we in the high percentage tax bracket at the assessor's office as the Center Creek community. We had to learn, quite by surprise, I must add, that you are continuing with your original plans to activate the incinerator across the street from our homes. Last month, I heard a council member's opening prayer that I would like to quote. The prayer was, "Please help us make right decisions that the citizens deserve and expect." Please help us make the right decisions that the citizens deserve and expect. Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Taylor, a burn incinerator at the site that you are forcing us to accept is not the right decision that we deserve nor that we expect. You see, we are part of the aging group that the EMS director spoke of. We had two speakers that were supposed to be here tonight, Mrs. Davis, her husband.
Not to interrupt, are you just a spokesperson for the entire group tonight?
We have others that are here to speak.
I'll allow another minute then.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Queen Davis, is very known, a very known, well-educated, wanted to speak tonight, but because of her medical conditions, especially her husband's medical conditions, she was not able to come tonight. Another one of our members had chemo today. He wanted to come to speak, but because of his chemo treatment that left him totally exhausted, he could not come. We are part of the aging group that your EMS director spoke of. We do not deserve nor do we expect the incinerator in our neighborhood. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Tashonda Broom, speaking on the incinerator.
Good evening, Tashonda Broom, District 3. My mom has two Chihuahuas because she's an animal lover that she loves very much, more than me at times. But if I had to choose the health of, if I had to choose the means more, if I had to choose what's more important, the health of animals and my mom, I would choose both because there's no comparison. Fairfield County Council, I am here to ask you all to also make their health your priority. Fairfield County Government has made Airport Road a dumping ground for trash. This has been a hidden agenda by the local government. Is dumping trash and smoke on Airport Road just a new redlining? I know all of you are familiar with the government practice and actions that's placed black communities on the agenda for redlining. Illegal or not, this is what it feels like to those suffering from cancer and respiratory illness. What is more important to you, I ask? Is my mom's neighborhood and the cluster of illness on Old Airport Road, excuse me, and their public health? From where Airport Road sits, your priorities are greatly out of order. Why is there such a rush to start your $110,000 fire incinerator? Isn't it cheaper to continue hauling all of that debris to Richland County? Have you looked into burying it on one of the other properties or other sites that you all have already purchased? What happened to the concerns for Airport Road in the last few months? We believe you had directed the county administrator to other places for the incinerator. In the community of Old Airport Road, victims, excuse me, is the community of Old Airport Road victims of a council that just has no concern? Putting yourself in the citizens and the neighborhood, put yourself in their shoes. Would you want this in your neighborhood?
Thank you. Next, Ms. Annie Armstrong, speaking on the incinerator.
Good evening, council. I thank you. I want to first thank y'all for, thank DHEC for cleaning up the debris for the past couple of months. This month, when we could go outside when the sun's shining and breathe some fresh air, we don't have to have that dust fly. And this week, it been raining, so you can't hide it there. But a couple of weeks ago, when the sun was shining bright, and I came home and I looked across the street, and see, I'm a senior and I got problems. I got two knee replacements and two ankle replacements. But my neighbors, we all been there a long time. We are senior citizens and they all have problems. We have, one's with respiratory problem, we got one's in wheelchair, we got in bed. But when I came home late a couple of weeks ago and the sun was shining bright, and I looked across the street, and it'd been over a year, better more, that I saw one of my neighbors that been bedridden. And the only time I ever see her is when they putting her in her car to take her to the doctor. But this day, her daughter and her grand, her niece, her sister and her nephew, you know, had put her in the wheelchair and pushed her outside in the sunshine with the breeze and the air she could breathe. She didn't have to worry about the sand, she didn't have to worry about the noise. She could sit on her foot and see her neighbor and look at the neighborhood before she would pass away. She could see the sunshine and I could see the sun on her face, just as bright. And I waited, but I know she didn't see me. But she hadn't been outside in over a year, better more from the noise and the sand and the dust. And that's all I got to say. And y'all, think about when we old and got to go outside and sitting out here, we don't want to smell that smoke. We don't want that dust blowing on us. We there, we done paid our time. We seniors and we want to live comfortable. If you think about it, you want that to happen to your mama or your daddy to have to sit and breathe smoke and breathe that dust? And I thank y'all, I thank DHEC for cleaning it up because they're cleaner and we can breathe a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, thank you guys for your service. I know it's usually not fun listening to everyone, but I know that we and you guys want the best for Fairfield County. We don't want just good enough. We want the best. And I thank Mr. Pauli a couple of weeks ago for pointing that out regarding the library, not just putting a Band-Aid and buying something that's good enough for right now, but let's build something that's good for the future. And I want to thank Mr. Bell and I wanted to thank Ms. Goines for emailing us back. I am part of the Center Creek community, but you guys admonished us to look at the incinerator on Old Airport Road, the site for that. So my wife and I drove out there after lunch one Sunday. And I got to say, I was pretty appalled. It was right across the street from these houses of these good people. And that you would even consider putting the equivalent of a smokestack that would just blow right into their front doors. I mean, when that's going, you can't come out of your house, I imagine. You can't open the doors or the windows. As a council, I would think that's just unacceptable. I mean, Fairfield County has about, I think, under 25,000 people in it as a county. And there's land galore. And it's not that expensive when you compare it to other counties. There should be no reason why you good folks can't find a piece of land somewhere that won't impact these good folks. It shouldn't, that one shouldn't be that difficult. But as another option, I spoke to a friend of mine who does this for a business. He does grading and clearing and he sells wood chips to places like Sunoco up in Hartsfield and other industry. And I told him about the issue that we have here. He's willing to bring his chipper into Fairfield County for free and grind up our debris. into Fairfield County for free and grind up our debris for free and haul it off. On the tail end, he'll get paid to sell it, but there will be no cost for an incinerator, no smoke for these good folks. You get rid of the debris, and everybody wins. I've given his number to Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor has said he's gonna call him. It just seems like a very simple solution that you guys don't even have to do anything about. You just let him know where to pick it up. I have one other comment, if you don't mind. This is skipping subjects, but about the wastewater treatment plant?
If you could hold that off till tomorrow for them, please.
Okay.
Tomorrow's the public here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Linda Sanders, speaking on the incinerator.
Say good evening to the councilman. Uh, my name is Linda Sanders, and I am from the District Three area. And I want to have, I'm so used to talking without, but I am here to talk about the incinerator. And, um, and it is a big concern to me, especially because of my husband. Governments were created to protect the people it serves. Right now, the last thing Airport Road is feeling is protected by the Fairfield County Council. We have a constitutional right to a clean environment that has not been polluted with cancer-causing agents. Yes, I said a constitutional right. Thomas Jefferson and the Second Congressional, I mean Continental Congress signed a doc, a document called the Declaration of Independence that we all are familiar with. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thence to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, devouring their just powers from consent of the governed. We are the governed, we are, and we don't consent to this. How, how, how can you continue to expose us to a constant flow of cancer-causing agents and try to convince us that it will not affect our lives and our health? Our liberty to stand in our yards or sleep in our beds? And no, the only thing we are breathing is a little bit of smoke from a passing car or a truck has been taken for over 20 years. The question is, when is enough too much? Your continued actions to start the burn incinerator stripped us of the right to pursue happiness. You see, it began when those green dumpsters was dumped on Airport Road for everyone to dump their trash. Then came the new improved recycling center. Now we have trash, yard waste, trees, plastic, tires, batteries.
I'll allow you to finish.
Thank you. Thank you. Cardboard appliances, furniture. Am I leaving anything out? Next, you added the chipper that really bought the cancer dust. It seems that now that we have cancer-breathing diseases want to smoke us out. Please don't insult our intelligence by asking us to believe that smoke only blows the north. And I want to just say just a little bit more, my husband, his name is Ricky Sanders, he was admitted into the hospital in December with pneumonia. And he have, I had to ask him to spell that, that lung disease that he have now. Psychocardosis, I think I'm pronouncing it right. And it's a breathing problem that he has now. And now he's out of work, and now he's on permanent oxygen. And with this incinerator coming up there, my husband love to sit outside. He tries to play the guitar, but he can't play, but he's trying. But he always sitting outside, and he always sitting in his truck by himself, and, and with this thing coming, he can't even sit outside. He's having problem coming up and down the steps, up and down the step. I wanted him to come today, but he wasn't feeling good because he had went today for therapy with his lungs. So, um, I'm praying that you all will keep your word. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Well.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. The issue at hand with the incinerator and the wood chips, I think we need to be sure that we've explored all of our options. Number one, and one gentleman already brought it up, Europe is begging for wood chips, and people are shipping it overseas. You may recall a few years ago, there was a company that was going to move into Fairfield County chopping down wood, creating wood pellets at that time, and, and selling it abroad into, into Europe. So there's obviously a big demand. I read not too long ago, there was another facility coming into South Carolina that was gonna do the same thing in another county. So there are options, and, and I would hope that we have explored the options besides selling, there's, I'm sure there's other options as far as location and everything else. I, I would like to hear what options we have explored, and have we explored selling it to companies who ship it abroad or someplace else? Because that is a big deal with Europe, and there are companies all over the United States. North Carolina has quite a few of those particular companies who are selling wood particles back to Europe. So if there's a market for it, all the way to Europe, there's gotta be a market for it, and the one gentleman said he could perhaps even get somebody to do it, as long as we didn't charge him for the chips. Maybe, maybe that is a partial solution, but we, let's be sure, considering all the issues that, that are presented to us, and you guys have made a lot of good decisions over the past couple of years, let's be sure that we really think this one through. We consider the health of the individuals, the investment. And besides that, you know, we, fund balance was mentioned, we've got millions in the fund balance, is that not correct? Yeah, that's what I thought. We have millions in the fund balance. I don't think we need to be, uh, not investing in our county's health, both from a beauty and, and, and a residence health factor before we make a hasty decision. We've got some money to do it, you guys have got the intelligence to explore the options. I, I would really urge you to explore those options, and certainly hooking up with a company that can haul it off and sell it is probably the best option we can get. But moving it to a proper location for long and short term is another possible option that may cost a few hundred thousand, but as far as the county are concerned, that's an investment well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Robert Davis, speaking on the incinerator.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, council members, Mr. Taylor. Good evening. Several months ago, a few months back, we were here opposing the rezoning of this 11 acres. We were here opposing it at third reading. Today, I'm gonna be extremely brief. I need four people, minimum. I need one person to make a motion to send this in oblivion. I need a second person to second it. I need a third and fourth person to support that vote. Five, six, and seven, we would appreciate your support. But let's count to four. That's the only thing I ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on update.
Jeff Schaefer, District Four. Good evening, council members. I'm listening tonight. I didn't come prepared with any written, I'm just gonna give it here off the top of my head. You may be in trouble, and she's gonna be in trouble for sure. The bottom line is that you listen to people complain about situations that are going on in each district or the neighborhood, and you have to analyze, what do we do about it? What, what's the smart thing to do? Well, the first smart thing to do is to say thank you to all the citizens who come up here. Public speaking is difficult for most people, and get out their thoughts and their emotions and tell you, hey, this is not a good move. Think about it clearly, and then make the best decision. Common sense is a good indicator for everybody when we do something. But it's sad that we have to have people come up and talk about things that we know, everyone knows. We shouldn't be having this in a, in a community if we, if we can afford not to. And if we can't afford to have it and have to have it, it sure as hell shouldn't be on someone's street. Uh, I wouldn't want it on my street, and you wouldn't want it on yours. Um, so I'm not here to be on one side of an issue or another. Just what's right is right, period. There's nothing that I could say about that. Updates. I was born and raised in the South. Not many of you know that. I was born and raised in the South Bronx. There's 2 million people there, almost 2 million people. You could take the entire Bronx and multiply 15 times to fit into Fairfield County. You think about that for a minute. That's how big we are, that's how small the Bronx is. Look at all the things that happen in our little city and what we have here. Think for a minute, 15 times the size of the Bronx and fit into Fairfield County. What are we doing? What are we doing? The money, the energy. Can you imagine 2 million people living here? 15 times? Because that's what we can afford to put in here, subways and buses and running around. That's what could happen if we were growing. I don't want to see 15, I don't want to see anybody else moving in, but I don't want to see anybody that's moving out either. Uh, we're losing population because of a lot of good reasons, and we have to start to understand how to make the county better for senior citizens. One day, I'm gonna be a senior citizen. Don't let that hair fool you. We need help, we need you to listen. And I want to thank everybody tonight who came up here and spoke, it's difficult to do that, takes courage. Thank you all for doing that, um, and for bringing awareness to the county so we all understand what the situation is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on visions.
Well, for once, I agree with Mr. Schaefer. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Good evening, Chairman Robertson and other council members. Jackie Workman, District Four, and I knew you all get tired of me saying this, but guess what, it'll be like John the Baptist. At the last council meeting, February the 10th, Elliot Davis submitted an audit report sustaining the facts that I and Mr. Armstrong bought before council for the last 10 months that were serious discrepancies. Pointing out purchase of the white Ford F-150 for $35,315. What are we good, you go ahead again, without approval of council, who issued the check for payment of the truck, who is driving and responsible for the truck, over $200,000 spent on the farmer's market, unauthorized spending. There were no bids on the farmer's market. $24,000 salary increase for the assistant administrator when the, um, when the workers at the recycling center only got $8, I think in 50 cents. Vote approval was not reflected in the minutes by you council. Last procurement was not followed by the administrator. It appears that when a woman raise serious issues, they are misogynistic charged without emotional of being mad, because you all said I was mad for 10 months. Really? Statements like this are made to control and to keep women in their so-called place. The audit proved that I and Mr. Armstrong to be right. What is council going to do to correct the misuse of the taxpayers' money? We talking about taxpayers' money? We ain't talking about your money. When can taxpayers get an answer to the misuse of these funds? And Mr. Chairman, and I love you to death because I love you daddy, but you had made the statement that you received a letter from the Ethics Commission stating no wrongdoings on the subject matter here. If this is true, why not show the taxpayers the letter? And we'll show the taxpayers the letter, show it. You cannot learn lessons with closed minds that walk out on a meeting or interrupt you all the time, Mr. Chairman. These positions are of high standard, therefore several individuals need to resign gracefully as said by one of the council members, District Four, I'm almost finished, representative, my representative said to Mr. Anderson, you need to resign.
Thank you.
Because this position, I'm almost finished, is of high standard. Council is saying, hush, hush, let's turn over our ears, let's turn our heads and overlook what has been done. That's what you're saying to the taxpayers, as if you don't know what's going on. And like I said, Mr. Chairman, I love you, but you got to do the right thing. Amen? Amen?
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
Now down to our county council time. Before I ask any council member, they want to be recognized, you know, a lot was said, especially about the incinerator. You know, to be honest, I don't think any council member up here chose that site to be the chipper site. That was a terrible location, I agree with you. I wouldn't want it across from my house either. Secondly, council has been looking for an alternate location, unbeknownst to a lot of council members, we have been looking, but, you know, when it's time for looking for land, people jack the prices up, so we can't disclose that information. Like I said, unbeknownst to a lot of us, we have been looking. So we are hearing you, and thank you for coming. Any other council member?
One of the things, um, as the, as the public come and talk about the incinerator, as, as most of you know, I voted against rezoning. The reason I voted against rezoning, because the only need to rezone was to place the incinerator over there. But now, we, we've been introduced tonight and, um, about another business model that we can, that we need to see what we can do around trying to, um, maybe, maybe have the commercial folks pay more. Because one of the things that, that we did, um, I guess it's about three or four weeks ago, we, we offered the mulch at $10 a load, and from my understanding, all the mulch is, is, is gone. So that mean we, we, we have the means to get rid of the mulch. So then we need to look at a business model that will help us get there. So then the other, other thing that the chair, Mr. Robertson, have just said is that none of us that's on this council today placed that chipper site at that location. So what we can do then is not only look for another location for the, um, for the incinerator, but look, look for another location for the, for the, for the chip inside. So, so again, and if I'm in order, that I do move that, um, that, that, that we do not place the incinerator anywhere until we come up with another location. If I can get a second. If I can get a second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bell and seconded by Mr. Trapp to repeat that motion again, Ms. Beattie?
That we do not place the incinerator be used on any location until, I mean, at that location, until we find another location for the incinerator, over, over near the Airport Road.
Y'all heard the motions, probably been seconded. I don't think it's any further discussion needs to go with it. You wanted to say something, Ms. Murray?
No, sir. But I'll answer any questions anybody may have.
Any discussion from council? Haven't, we already voted on, having a site for the incinerator, but I thought at one time we decided it was gonna be moved.
We discussed it, I think behind, yeah.
And my opinion, it shouldn't be on Old Airport Road, it should be moved somewhere else.
I think we all agree with that.
Yeah. But there's, there's no need to, we'd have to go through all these resolutions again if we, if we voted. Let's just let it go as it is and then find another place. You don't need to have a new motion made to do it. The motion's been made now, Mr. Douglas. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Bell's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Just to clarify, none of us up here, well, I'll speak for myself, I'll say aye will. I never wanted to put that, that chipper site should have never been there anyway because it's in a terrible location. Like I said, no one up here is responsible for that. So the council members that was responsible for it, you need to talk with them, find out why they did it, so. You can go in a minute and find out, I'm sure. Any further council member like to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the citizens for coming out, voicing their concerns, and I'm pleased with the outcome, and I'm sure they are as well.
Any further, council? If not, we do have two matters to discuss in executive session. Item A, contractual matter discussing concerning Ridgeway Branch Library building lease and current contract options. And B, receive legal advice discussing of negotiations concerning potential contract for purchase of additional property that meets the necessary requirements for the property to be used as a suitable location for wastewater treatment site pursuant to South Carolina Section Code 30-4-70, subsection A, paragraph two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor going to executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now in executive session at 7:13.